Okay, call this Village of Green Hills council meeting for January 23rd, 2022.
Twenty-fifth.
Oh, that's right. Maybe I should start bringing my readers in. Those lights aren't on, so the light's not bright enough for me to see.
Excuses, excuses.
Okay, clerk, call the roll.
Oh, it's me. Holter?
Here.
Hermes?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Metz?
Here.
Augmanoglu?
Here.
Holter?
Here.
Here. We have a prayer by Maria Walther.
God guide us in the new year to grow closer together in our families, in our unis and our world, and let us always strive to bring peace to the world. Let us live each day to the fullest for all the blessings of the year that we give you. Thanks, God, and please protect our police department. They are exposed there every time they answer a call, our volunteer fire department, all of our public servants, and please keep us in your prayers, everybody, for the Village of Green Hills, so we would have the least amount of people with COVID. We praise and we do thank God, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have minutes of the previous council meeting of January the 11th, 2022. Do you have any corrections? If not, stand as the minutes are approved. No public presentations, no public hearings. Reports of municipal officials, municipal manager Ivan Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with the legislative report. Tonight on the agenda, Resolution 02, that provides me with the authorization to prepare and submit an application for funding. The funding is for fast charging stations for electric vehicles. I can tell you at this point in time, this is quite a challenge. I don't know that this one will actually make it in, but the mayor and I had spoken and felt there was value in going ahead and passing this in the event that it all comes together in time, we would at least have that in place, since that's our only opportunity. The deadline is next Monday. So again, just to review this a little bit, the location we're considering is behind the shopping center, because they like for these, the chargers to be in locations where there's other things that people can be doing while they're charging their vehicles. We also have adequate power behind the shopping center to accommodate something like this. So, any questions on that one? Do you have anything more?
Well, yeah, the state was a little slow in getting the information, this grant out, and then the state has some vendors that installed these items, and we didn't get much of a response out of them. Duke was a little slow to get his information, and so without a good firm bid from one of the state's vendors, we may not get this in time, but I'm hoping the EPA realizes that they gave everybody about 25 days to put all this together. And actually, it wasn't until last week that they got all the guidelines put up on it. And so it is a learning experience. There aren't many of these DC high-speed fast chargers in the area, and there aren't many cars right now, but the number of vehicles that can take advantage of these is increasing fairly rapidly. I was reading tonight, GM hopes within two years to be selling over 600,000 electrical vehicles.
And one more thing, we also felt there was value, all the vendors we talked to do proposals for people's applications, so we thought it would be a good idea to consider that. We're going to ask each one to give us one and possibly pick one, because if it's not this funding, there will be more funding, or there will come a time when we want to put some in. So it would be good information to have on hand, so we're ready to go if and when additional funding becomes available. The next item is revision of our fee schedule. We have talked about all of these this year. There's slight increases in the picnic shelter rental, the dump truck rental, the addition of the $5 charge per person over five for a resident family membership, and the addition of a membership category for swim team member. I want to talk about the swim team member one a little bit, because that would be for, you know, we don't permit youth under the age of 12 to come in without an adult, so it would apply to, you know, 12 and older, they can come in, and then our thinking would be that for if they're under 12, they would have to be accompanied by an adult with a membership. So I just wanted to make sure you're all aware of that. Okay. Then the final one is the one that we all, the wording in the previously passed resolution was adjusted for clarity. This resolution, you know, does the clarification as well as repeals the previous one that you had considered in December. A couple of other items that I want to point out, our gas aggregation program, we're in a four-year program, and we have like an amazing rate, just to throw them out. For example, in our program, there's that $3, $3.48 MCF. I don't know what that stands for, but that compares to like Duke, who is at $5.98. So it's quite a difference between the two, and we do have a locked-in rate for four years. However, they're required by law every two years to send out opt-out letters, so that gets a little confusing for our residents, but those letters will go out probably by the end of this week, and IGS is the vendor who will be sending them out. And again, they don't have to do anything at all to stay in the program. Certainly, if they're not in the program, they might want to consider it, because again, our rate is locked in. Everybody else's rates are going up pretty quick right now, so I wanted to point that out. And then also-
If I could just ask a question?
Yes.
When is the opt-out opportunity or rate?
They'll be sending the letters out by the end of this week, so everybody should start receiving those.
Okay, so it's not like we could put something in the journal to give people a heads-up?
I'm just going to put something in anyway, just like by now you should have received it sort of thing.
Okay, because I think that sometimes people panic when they see those letters, thinking, what's it mean?
Yes, yeah, they can be confusing. And the other thing that always seems to happen when these kinds of letters go out and other people know it, and they go door-to-door and try to act like they're our program. Our folks will never go door-to-door, nor will they call people, so we try to put that on the web to remind people, you know, don't fall for those folks that are knocking at your door, because they don't represent our program. So if a resident does nothing at all, they will be in the program. Correct.
If they're already in the program.
If they're already in it, yes.
And they will see the most cost savings by staying into the program?
They sure will.
Okay, that's probably key.
We get amazing rate right now for that, yeah. The other item I did want to mention is the part-time clerk. It is being advertised now at the higher rate. Unfortunately, at this point, we don't have any applicants, so I just want to put you on that. Maybe we will. Okay, well, we'll remain hopeful right there. That's what I have for now.
Okay. Law director, Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't have a report until I got, this is breaking news. I've been in some correspondence with the state senator's office about some potential legislation about virtual meetings, again, because if you remember, that temporary change went away back in July, and I did find out just this afternoon that there, I don't have the details exactly yet, but they do anticipate that in the coming weeks, the state senate plans to pass a bill that would sort of re-invoke that virtual meeting ability. It would likely have, it would not be permanent. There has been some talk about just making it permanent. This does not appear to do that. It will just set another temporary deadline. That's about all I know of it yet, but it sounds like in the next weeks, they plan on passing that. And it doesn't mean you have to, but it means if they do, you'll have the ability to go back to remote or virtual meetings.
Does that allow for a hybrid too?
I suspect it would. If it's like the last time they did it, then yes, that allowed for, if you were present, you could be physically present. If you wanted to connect remotely, you could do that. So we'll have to wait and see what the language is. If it's like last time, then yes, it would allow for a hybrid.
All right, thank you.
But that's all I have.
Clerk of council, Ivan Kovak, acting clerk.
No, just for the 20.
Chief of police, Neil Fergelman.
Well, the opposite of breaking news, I'm going to take you back in time a little bit, since today is one month removed from Christmas. I just wanted to tell you some of the fun that we did have over the holidays with our Green Hills families. Probably the one that I think we all enjoy the most is when we do the shop with the cop and we take out some needy children who otherwise wouldn't have a Christmas. And our residents do a good job, not only of pointing those folks out to us, who oftentimes don't come forward on their own, but they also do an excellent job of funding these shopping adventures. We have so many wonderful people in this community that anonymously come forward and give us hundreds and sometimes even up to $1,000 that we put into our community fund and we utilize for events such as this. So on December 23rd, we had a group of officers who took some kids out that weren't going to have much of a Christmas, and we had lots of smiles and lots of presents, and we enjoyed it just as much as they did. In addition to that, we've also participated with the schools, and we actually had Forest Park involved in this and the Children's Hunger Alliance to distribute meals to kids that otherwise wouldn't have had a holiday meal. And then we also partnered with our friends in the Green Hills Fire Department and the Forest Park Police and Fire Departments to man some posts in front of the Walmart up the street and collect for the tornado aid for the residents down in Kentucky that were very much in need, and we were able to fill not only a squad truck and a cruiser, but actually part of a storage room for supplies, cash, and food that went down to aid those folks. So I think that we had good holiday spirit in our community, and I can't reiterate enough that this is only made possible, this isn't our funding or anything from the general fund or any government funds. These are contributions from our residents right here in Green Hills that never cease to amaze me with their goodness. We also complied with the latest state standard, which brings this up to speed with all of the standards that the state has developed. This was actually on law enforcement response to mass protest and demonstrations and an agency wellness standard. And I mentioned to you last month that in November, when we had our departmental meeting, we actually brought in a psychologist, a clinical psychologist, that gave our officers some pointers. She also happens to be related to me, it was my daughter, so we got a pretty good fee or no fee for that one, so, and I think that she had some good tips, but we did comply with the agency wellness standard by starting some programs to look out for the wellness of our own personnel. We've already had a supervisors' meeting to develop plans for the current year. One of the things that we want to do is make use of the resources that we have right here on our department. We have a unique situation in that we held on to a former sergeant, Brian Johnston, who is now a corporal, but he doesn't work all that often, but he has extensive skills and techniques in a lot of areas. So we were going to, we were thinking about sending our officers to a response on DOA calls, on dead-on arrival calls, because sometimes there's things that aren't exactly what they appear at first blush, and we want our officers to be well-trained so that a homicide wouldn't go undetected. And Brian stepped up to the plate and said, well, you know, I've had schooling on that and I've investigated those, and I'll teach the class. So he'll be doing that here this year. Mike Mathis, who as you know, retired as a police chief in Springdale, always loved his time in investigation, so that's what we use him for, and he is imparting that knowledge on to others. He's teaching our newer officers on search warrants and the proper procedures, on fingerprinting techniques, and domestic violence, he'll be doing an upcoming class on that. And as Ms. Hermes knows, we have a unique schedule, that we have an extra amount of staff on Thursday, so what we're doing is utilizing that time wisely and doing a lot of our formalized training on that Thursday, when we can pull people off the street and still provide adequate coverage to our citizens. We're also looking at some Spanish training for our officers, drug interdiction training. We're continuing our defensive tactics training and crisis intervention training. We're very anxious to get back started with our community programs, such as the Citizens' Police Academy, the defensive tactics program for our citizens, and we'd like to do a coffee with the cops sooner rather than later, but it's all dependent on what our, what the COVID levels show us in the near future. I suppose the last thing I'd like to tell you is that we're on Google. We have a Google listing for the Green Hills Police Department, and I did a little bit of adding to that several years back, but last month, we got our very first five-star review on Google, which we were pretty proud of, and just came out of the blue, and it was a lady by the name of Erica Holbrook that posted, "I just wanted to thank Officer Jared Francis for his service. He is a true gentleman. He noticed that my son and I were sitting in a cold car on a rainy day. He came over and asked if we were okay. Because of him, we arrived home safe and warm. I know his community is so grateful to have him. Thank you so much." So it was very nice to see a Google five-star review. That's new it on me. During the month of December, we made 21 criminal arrests, including five for failure to appear warrants, four for domestic violence, two for operating a vehicle into the influence, one for assault, one for unauthorized use of a motor vehicle, one for criminal damaging, one for drug paraphernalia, and one for drug possession. We responded to a total of 191 incidents in that month, including 41 squad runs, 11 domestic trouble calls, 11 trouble runs, 11 for warrant service, 10 for animal complaints, nine for lockouts, seven for suspicious vehicles. We provided mutual aid to our fellow law enforcement officers, north and south, in 13 instances. We issued 45 traffic citations, 45 warnings, and we investigated three traffic crashes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Comments or questions?
Chief, there's a news article that came out here recently concerning the state funding, I guess through federal funds for body cameras. Is that something we may be looking at at least, just as a consideration?
We may at some time. Our current cameras in the cruisers provide about 95% of what we need. Most of our stops and our arrests are results of activities on Winton Road, so we have pretty adequate camera coverage there. We often position our cruisers so that it'll take in whatever action may be that is called an officer there. The unfortunate truth with body cams is that it records probably 85 to 90% of what we do, and they are very intricate, as Jeff will tell you, state laws that allow, that require you to redact certain instances, and there's a lot. It's not just one or two things, it's a lot. If you have a community with people that make prolific public records requests, you're going to just about need to hire somebody to do all the redaction that's involved. So I've been reluctant to jump into that pool, because you'll get some funding upfront, but you're going to pay for it, the storage costs-
And I know the storage was the issue.
And the personnel redaction, the records management costs, that we just don't have the personnel for right now.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, mayor's court report. I have receipts for the month of December. The state of Ohio received $1,520.50. We sent $58.50 to Hamilton County, and the Village of Green Hills got $6,279. And that's all I have. Committee reports, intergovernmental affairs, laws and rules, Maria Walther.
We're going to have our first meeting of the year on the 22nd of February at 6:00.
Recreation cable TV, Natasha Metz.
No report, we have to schedule a meeting.
Services and streets, Jennifer Ozymanoglu.
No report at this time, we aren't going to schedule a meeting.
Community development, Jeff Halder.
Echoing Natasha, we have to establish a time to meet, and we'll do that.
Safety, Melanie Hermes.
I'm with Maria. Our safety committee will meet on February 22nd at 5:30 PM, right before the laws and rules.
And Jack Lee, finance and audit.
No report at this time. We will have three resolutions, as the village manager mentioned earlier here shortly.
All right, this is an opportunity for residents and non-residents to make comments solely regarding legislation that's on the current agenda. Non-residents must obtain prior permission. This is the time for citizens to comment on legislation listed on the agenda for the session of council. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and state your comments. Comments will be limited to four minutes. Okay, we have no unfinished business, new business. Resolution number 2022-02-F, resolution authorizing the municipal manager to apply for a grant from Diesel Mitigation Trust Fund of the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency and to make use of funds received in accordance with the program. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2022-02-F, resolution authorizing the municipal manager to apply for a grant from the Diesel Mitigation Trust Fund of the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency and to make use of funds received in accordance with the program. Whereas the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, OEP, is offering grant funding from the Diesel Mitigation Trust Fund program to install DC fast chargers to expand the state's electric vehicle charging infrastructure network along designated corridors in 26 priority counties in Ohio, with Hamilton County being one of those counties. And whereas Green Hills desires to take advantage of the funding opportunity to install said chargers in public property within the village, now therefore be resolved by the Council of Village Green Hills, State of Ohio. That's section one. The municipal manager is hereby authorized and directed to execute and file an application and all related paperwork with the OEP, and to provide all information and documentation required to become eligible for this funding assistance. Section two, the municipal manager is hereby authorized to make use of any funding received in accordance with this program. Section three, the council of the Village of Green Hills does agree to host the charging stations for a minimum of five years pursuant to the program requirements. Section four, that this resolution shall be in full force and take effect immediately upon its passage. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Comments or questions? I think we kind of covered it before. All right, clerk, call the roll.
Lee?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Ozymanoglu?
Aye.
Holter?
Aye.
Resolution number 2022-02-F passes. Next resolution is number 22-03-F, resolution adopting the 2020 Green Hills fee schedule. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2022-03-F, resolution adopting the 2022 Green Hills fee schedule, whereas the village is determined that it is necessary to assess fees for certain services, and whereas the council updates the fee schedule annually. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio. That's section one. The council of the Village of Green Hills hereby adopts the fee schedule as set forth in Exhibit A, attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference. Section two, that this resolution shall be and is effective from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments or questions?
Ivan, you were going to make some mention about the swim team beyond that.
Right. Well, just that we do have that at $25, and again, that dollar amount is, we don't want to make it not affordable for them to be a member of the swim team, but, you know, because they're using our pool and ours, we thought it was appropriate. But that has to be consistent, though, with our current guideline at the pool, that you have to be 12 or older to enter the pool without an adult. So if they're younger than 12, they can still take advantage of this, but must be accompanied by, if there's no other membership involved, they would have to still be accompanied by an adult, either through a daily rate or another membership.
It would be appropriate that, should this resolution pass, that we make this aware of the swim team management or coaches.
Yes.
Frankly, I think they can work that fee into their paperwork.
Okay. All right, yeah. As soon as, as soon as it passes, we'll know.
That will help administrate the whole process.
Okay.
But if their family has a family pass, they do not need-
That's right.
-an additional swim team pass.
That's right, yes.
And so we decided to do it just for the swim team and not like a student membership? Because I know we were still kind of discussing.
Yeah, at least at this point. I think we'll have to look at that closer, kind of for some of the same reasons, and-
The age thing?
Yeah, the teenagers. I think it would have impact on some of our other categories, and then we'd end up with a lot of teenagers rather than families at the pool. You know, I think we just need to look at the impact that that might have.
Okay.
Clerk, call the roll.
Ozymanoglu?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Holter?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Metz?
Nay.
Hermes?
Aye.
Resolution number 2022-03-F passes. Next resolution, number 2022-04-F, resolution establishing new salaries for various village employees and repealing resolution number 2021-31-F. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 2022-04-F, resolution establishing new salaries for various village employees and repealing the resolution number 2021-31-F. Be it resolved by the council of Village Green Hills, State of Ohio. That's section one. For the job classifications identified in Exhibit A to this resolution incorporated herein and by reference made a part of, hereof, a compensation schedule is outlined. Advancement from step to step will occur every other year and shall become effective in the first full pay period of the appropriate fiscal year based upon the schedule. Movement to the next step will be based upon the recommendation of the department head to the municipal manager as follows. A, in the last two months of the fiscal year, each employee's performance will be reviewed by their supervisor, who will submit a written recommendation for movement to the next step to the appropriate department head. To be eligible for such movement, the employee must have at least a satisfactory performance rating. B, that the recommendation will be considered- B, that the recommendation will be considered by the municipal manager and shall either approve or deny such recommendation based upon their determination whether such movement is generally within the best interests of the village as an organization, including but not limited to such factors as the financial condition of the village. C, if the employee's movement is denied because of work performance or disciplinary issues, the employee will not receive a movement in the pay step until the next fiscal year contingent upon an improvement in work performance being documented. Receiving said compensation shall be based upon the village's financial condition as determined by the finance director and the municipal manager and supported by the approved budget for the year under consideration. According to the schedule, police personnel will begin in a new schedule as follows. Step A, full-time Lieutenant Ann Ward, full-time Sergeant Tony Patton, full-time Police Officer Zach Braun, full-time Patrol Officer Blake Mayberry, full-time Patrol Officer Brandon Young, full-time Patrol Officer David Bacon, part-time Corporal Brian Johnson, part-time Corporal Mike Martin. Step B, full-time Patrol Officer Andy Moore, full-time Patrol Officer Robin Leenhoff, full-time Patrol Officer Carl Hallbruck. Section 2, management personnel salary adjustments as of the pay period beginning January 10, 2022, and ending January 23, 2022. Payable on January 28, 2022 are as follows. Municipal Manager, new total of one-hundred-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and fifty-four cents annually. Existing six-thousand-dollar car allowance is eliminated and incorporated in the new total. Police Chief, new total of eighty-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and ninety-three cents annually. Finance Director, new total of eighty-three-thousand-twenty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents annually. Section 3, Management Personnel Wage Adjustments as of the pay period beginning in January 10, 2022, ending January 23, 2022. Payable on July 28, 2022 are as follows. Service Foreman, new hourly rate of thirty-four dollars and forty-five cents. Section 4, the Code Enforcement Officer Position shall change from an exempt position to a non-exempt position. There is no wage adjustment in the corresponding hourly rate pay of twenty-seven dollars and seventy cents. Hours will be increased to twenty-five hours per pay period. This change will go into effect as of the pay period beginning January 10, 2022, ending January 23, 2022. Payable as of January 28, 2022. Section 5, all other positions not identified in this resolution will continue to be compensated as outlined by the resolution 2019-06-F passed February 26, 2019. Section 6, Resolution number 2021-31-F passed by council on December 14, 2021, is hereby repealed. Section 7, this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its adoption. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
This kinda cleans up the situation we passed in December. I think it just makes it a much cleaner presentation, so more understandable.
Clear call of rule?
Holter?
Aye.
Osmanoglu?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Metz?
Nay.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution number 2022-04 passes. All right. Do you have any comments from council members? Do you have any comments you wanna make?
We're having the meeting for laws and rules on the twenty-second of February at six o'clock.
No comments, but my calendar is the same day at 5:30 for safety.
And we'll establish a time for community development. I did have one comment. I noticed two flat tires on Farragut and one on Junefield. The one on Junefield that's been there for a while. So it could be somewhat winter-related, maybe, I don't know, but I know that maybe we can take a look at that.
It's the Farragut, the usual suspect?
Yeah, a little farther up, so I guess they're sharing the-
Spreading it around. All right, Jack, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Natasha?
None.
Jennifer?
No, I don't.
And we sort of already covered the municipal calendar there. Now we have another opportunity for residents and non-residents to appear before council. Non-residents must obtain prior permission. This is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, then state your comments or questions. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for response. This will allow time for thorough and thoughtful consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to four minutes. Speakers may not yield any or all of their time to other speakers. We have a timer.
Yeah, my name's Tom Brownfield. I live at 29 Damon Road. Just really curious about the status of DeWitt Court. And, you know, I know we approved, or the zoning variance got approved last month or whenever. Just curious if they do have site plan approval, if they've applied for building permits, if the developer's gonna speculation build these homes and wait for people to buy them? Or are they waiting for people to purchase them prior to building? Or, you know, what is going on up on DeWitt Court?
Okay. They did receive approval from Planning Commission to proceed, Board of Zoning Appeals, wasn't it? Yeah, Board of Zoning Appeals to proceed. Two homes are under contract, so they're not really building spec buildings. What was your third part there? I think he asked the third one there, didn't he?
You say two of them are under contract?
Two, yes.
Okay, good.
And yes, they have submitted those plans for permits. They're still under plan review.
No, I mean, I'm curious. I want this property developed, because, I mean, I catch a lot of water from DeWitt Court. I mean, everybody on my area, Damon, does, but, you know, just the sooner this thing can get, you know, developed and pulled up, I mean, the happier I'll be, so.
Okay.
I mean, have they let anybody know when they may possibly break ground?
We're still working through issues, but hopefully soon. We've been hopeful, but, you know, each day seems to present a new challenge. But I, hopefully, I don't know, within a couple months, perhaps?
I do know that contractors across the board have just heard of another situation where they've been waiting for trusses to come in, you know. So it's, I don't think, we're not dragging our feet, but even if we got everything proceeding, it's been slowed way down because of supply chain issues. But we'd like to see that happen, along with the park and other things, too. But thank you for expressing your concern.
And interest.
Thank you.
Feel like I'm controlling a football game or something with minimal success.
Hello.
Hi.
Monique Mason-Halter, 154 Junefield Avenue. I'm here tonight to ask you to pass an emergency ordinance to regulate how 4G and 5G small cells and other wireless infrastructure are installed in the village. As you know, it is not the first time I've asked you to do this. In November, I asked again and informed you that other local municipal councils have already passed ordinance to regulate how small cell and wireless infrastructure is installed. Amberly Village, Anderson Township, Cincinnati, Marymont, and Mason have passed them, there are probably others. The Amberly Village ordinance is about nine pages long, according to it. The council, quote, "determined that it is in the best interest of the village to add Chapter 160 to its codified ordinances," end quote. And, quote, "the planning commission has reviewed and recommends the adoption of Chapter 160 and the small cell design guidelines." The ordinance was passed as an emergency measure that went into effect immediately as being, quote, "necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and general welfare," end quote. And, quote, "the reason for the emergency is to ensure adequate measures are in place in order to deal with applications for small cell facilities and wireless support structures that are anticipated in the near future," end quote. According to this ordinance, Ohio House Bill 478 and Ohio Revised Code Chapter 4936 permit the regulation of small cell facilities and wireless support structures by municipalities. This being the case, there is no reason that you couldn't create and pass an ordinance, too. You could even copy what is written in the Amberly Village ordinance for our community. The Amberly Village application procedure requires a pre-application meeting to, quote, "discuss projects on a conceptual level with the village, including application types, location, design process, and other similar factors," end quote. Application materials required include confirmation of compliance with state and federal environmental regulations, a sworn affidavit prepared and signed by an RF engineer confirming that the facility conforms with the applicable government regulations, a map showing the location of proposed facilities and all existing wireless facilities within one thousand feet of the proposed facilities, utility plants, including electrical service and fiber optic connections, and more. The applicant must also, quote, "provide the ambient noise level generated from the equipment, if any," end quote. Here's more. Quote, "The village engineer shall determine if the application is in order in accordance with established administrative policy and shall make a final determination within ninety days after the permit is applied for as to whether or not such permit should be granted and, if so, under what terms and conditions." The village engineer is authorized to promulgate regulations as allowed by Ohio Revised Code 4939-0314, including but not limited to design, height, spacing, location, and co-location. One, the engineer shall promulgate detailed design guidelines with objective technically feasible criteria applied in a nondiscriminatory manner that reasonable match the aesthetic and character of the needed areas. Two, the engineer shall have authority to update or supplement the design guidelines to address relevant changes in law, technology, or administrative procedures. Three, if any provisions of this chapter are in conflict with any other provisions of the codified ordinances with the provisions of this Chapter 160 and the small cell design guidelines will apply. There's more to this ordinance, of course, but you only provide four minutes. So I'm asking you again to pass an emergency ordinance to deal with applications for small cell facilities, wireless support structures, and fiber optic lines and connections. I would like an answer also sent to me if you decide not to pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thanks, Monique. I just wonder if it's something that we could discuss at the retreat coming up?
Sure. I'd kinda like a clarification. Are you talking specifically about a utilities, say like Verizon or AT&amp;T-type small cell? Or are you talking about individual residents with the 4G or 5G repeaters that they might put on their house?
This is the Amberly Village ordinance?
Well, it doesn't really matter whether it's Amberly Village or, you know, any of the others. I was just wondering which of those you were-
I didn't make that clear? I'm asking you to pass an ordinance to regulate what goes on in the village as far as Verizon, AT&amp;T, et cetera.
Okay, okay. That, you answered my question. Okay, thank you.
Todd Berger, 2 January Court, Green Hills. What I have to say doesn't strictly have to do with the village's business, but it's something that happened to me recently, I think is of general interest to people in the age of COVID. Apparently, a month ago, I caught COVID, and I found myself entering the new year with the fever and a cough. And I went up and got myself tested, and it was positive three weeks ago. Now I guess you're only required to isolate for five weeks, but I basically stayed home for two weeks and didn't do much last week, anyway. But what I did find myself is that I, there are no, apparently there are no official medical early treatments for COVID. And I thought I'd had immunity before. Maybe I was wrong, maybe it were all, but anyway, I hadn't taken the shot. And so I wasn't offered any early treatment in an official medical framework. And I got to thinking, maybe there's something I can do. And I got to thinking that maybe Dr. Bender knows. She's into health and wellness. And so I called her, and she gave me some advice on early treatments and things that I could do. And I don't know if I would've gotten worse, better, the same, without taking advantage of that information. But after fully implementing the information I got in the early treatment, in twenty-four hours, my fever was gone, and I wasn't coughing hardly any at all. And I was just thinking, well, maybe that helped. And so I guess if anybody tests positive for COVID, there's, and you're not offered any options other than Tylenol or Advil, that it might do well to call Dr. Bender, who has the office in the village, in the shopping center, and she can maybe give you some advice.
Well, do tell. Was vitamin D, was it?
That was part of it. And there were several other things. And so, as I say, I don't know how it would've turned out differently, but as I say, for whatever reason, within twenty-four hours, my symptoms seemed to have abated, and I felt much better, so. But maybe it was just because I felt I was doing something to help. But I just thought I'd mention that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for the information.
Glad you're feeling better.
Glad you're better. Good to see you here.
Okay. We have an executive session with purposes of discussing the possible disposition of property. Somebody wanna make a motion?
Aye, so move.
I second it.
Do we give roll call?
You give roll call.
Osmanoglu?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Holter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Okay, we're going into executive session, and we'll adjourn after that with no other action following the executive session.
Thank you all for coming.